Most fun we've had around here in five years. We're going to move into the delegation phase of the evening and we'll start with Scott Patterson from La Bresch Patterson.
Good evening Chair Whaley, members of council and members of the public. Again, I'm Scott Patterson from La Bresch Patterson and Associates and I'm very happy that the computer system's back up and running so I can do my presentation for you this evening. So with me tonight are some other members of the development team in case there's questions that we can answer for council. That includes Ballner Property Management, Reinderson Reader who are the project architect, and Concept Development Group Incorporated who are the contractor should the project proceed to development. So as noted, the subject property is at 508 Beechwood. It's 1.82 acres in size and it currently contains a seven-story residential apartment building, rental, with 41 units in that building. And the property has 82 meters of frontage along Beechwood Drive. Just for community context, this image shows, the red circle represents a six-minute walk from the subject property. The yellow dots represent commercial facilities, retail. Blue represents public schools and educational establishments in the area and the green dots represent the local parks. So the proposal, as Ms. Fisher had explained to you, is to retain the existing building, which is seven stories and 41 units, and construct a new building on the subject property. The new building, it would essentially be 12 stories from the road. The 13-story component is actually internal to the site. The site has a great differential and drops off from the street. And where the access to the underground parking is located, at that location, the building would be 13 stories. So from Beechwood Drive, essentially the building would be a 12-story building. It would contain 140 units. And as noted, the overall site combined with the existing building and the new building would have 307 bedrooms and a total of 181 units. And as noted, the entire project is meant to be a rental project for tenure. New surface parking and underground parking would be developed and a total of 243 parking spaces. And there would be the creation of new internal and external amenity areas and those would be available for all tenants, so for the existing building and for the new building as well. And there's a proposal, or part of the proposal, is to upgrade the existing building so that it would match. If you've been to the site or are aware of the site, the existing building is somewhat dated. So as part of this project, there would be a modification or an improvement to the existing building as well to have it match the new building. From a planning perspective, the project is consistent with the provincial policy statement, conforms to the growth plan, conforms to the region of Waterloo official plan, conforms to the city of Waterloo official plan. As Ms. Fisher had noted, the current official plan designation on the property allows for 600 bedrooms and the proposal before you tonight allows for 417 bedrooms per hectare. The official plan also allows for a maximum building height of 40 meters and the proposal is for 39.8 meters. As Ms. Fisher had noted, there's multiple zoning regulations in force on the property today. There's currently three zoning bylaws and the minor variants, most of which I would suggest to you are dated. They don't reflect the current direction from the province, from the region and from yourselves, from the city of Waterloo with regard to your official plan for what the development of these lands could, should, could and should ultimately be. So as noted, we are seeking site-specific zoning regulations to not totally disregard what was there today, the existing regulations, but to put in place zoning regulations that conform to the official plan and would reflect provincial policy and allow for this development to occur. And the basis for those zoning regulations is based on the new comprehensive zoning bylaw. And the new zoning would be RMU 40 for the subject lands that's proposed. So the regulations that we were seeking were basically modeled off the new zoning. So the requested zoning, and I know there's been some discussion about this, is the 3.5 meter front yard setback as opposed to the 7.5 meters under the current regulations. The new zoning bylaw would require a 5-meter front yard setback. And as noted, we're requesting a 2.7-meter interior side yard and that's along the walkway. It was 3 meters and the reason we're going to 2.7 is because of the proposal to convey one foot of land to the city of Waterloo. That allows us to then merge the two properties back into one property, as staff had noted. So that's the reason for going from 3 meters down to 2.7. I would note that the RMU 40 zoning would require a 3-meter interior side yard setback if approved by council. Maximum building height again of 40 meters, an amenity area of 2.5 square meters per bedroom, the reduction in the landscaped open space to 18 percent, a parking requirement of 1.3 spaces per unit, a limit on the maximum number of dwelling units of 181. And then the regulations, as were noted, to reflect the new regulations that will probably come in through the new zoning bylaw for the podium height, tower separation and horizontal tower distance. And again, those are meant to be put in place so that if the new zoning bylaw comes in, that this site would already have provisions in place to recognize those requirements and the site wouldn't become legal non-conforming for those specific items. It would have the regulations as part of the new zoning. So just for context with regard to the setbacks, and again, there was some discussion about this. The light blue outline on the sketch is the actual parking structure. And that's meant to be the podium, the 4.5 meter height that we're discussing. So as you can see on the north side with the tributary of Clare Creek, there's actually a 34-meter setback. And again, this is taken from our measurements from air photos, not surveyed. Roughly 34 meters to the abutting residences to the north. Across the walkway, we're seeing 18 meters to the actual parking structure and then 24 meters to the actual tower. And across the front, or across Beechwood Drive, we're seeing 39 meters to the residences across the road and 37 meters if we go east to the existing residences as well. And I'd just like to say that most times when I'm doing an infill project or appearing before council, I don't have the luxury of having a creek or a walkway or any of these features surrounding a property that provide an additional buffer. Usually we're seeking reductions for setbacks with right to the property line with none of these additional features being added to it. So this is a copy of the proposed site plan as it is today. You'll note on the north being to the top, there is a setback to Clare Creek. So even though we're requesting a 7.5-meter rear yard, there will be regulations imposed by the conservation authority that will supplement that and actually make it larger than 7.5. The current site plan shows it at 10.5. This plan also shows the amenity space that will actually form the frontage of the property facing towards the street should the project go ahead. Shows the new revised access location, fire route and the surface parking that would be And again, these are the concept renderings for the development. This also shows the matching that I spoke about with the existing building and having it brought into conformity with the new building and how that would look. And again, the renderings from the other side. So if I could, we do have a video prepared by the architect of how this building would look on-site, so if I could just play that for you. Hopefully it works. So thank you for allowing that to play through. Just for council's information, we did have a resident meeting on May the 30th where residents of the existing building were invited to attend an onsite meeting. They met with myself, the property owner, the contractor and the architect where we discussed the project with the existing residents. They provided some very good feedback and some questions that we took away that will be added or refined into the proposal going forward. Going forward, we'll continue to work with Waterloo staff and agency staff on this project. We're here to respond to the public inquiries and comments and to listen to those tonight. Eventually, we'll work with staff to hopefully schedule the formal public meeting. And naturally, we're here tonight in full support of the project and we're available to answer any questions from either myself or the subject team or project team. So with that.
Counsel, any questions for the delegation? Mr. Burke? Counselor Burke?
You mentioned resident information meeting. That was held with just the residents of the apartment or with everyone in the neighborhood?
Through you Chair Whaley. The meeting on May 30th was with the residents of the existing building only.
Okay.
We presented the project to them, advised of the public meeting coming up, made it known to them that the information was available on the city's website if they wanted to review it further. And we were coming tonight to actually see the public comments as well.
So that's a 3D fly-around, showed a lot more green space than I expected. The reduction from 30 percent, sorry, from 30 percent to 18 percent is, I think, I think a lot of us, wherever we live, understand the need for, you know, intensification and building up and maybe we can even look at an apartment building in our neighborhood and say, "Well, I could see something else going there." But I think we worry about the loss of that green space. And that, to me, it seems like a significant amount of green space. Can you, can you tell me more about that? Why is that necessary?
Through you Chair Whaley. I believe it's a function of, as Ms. Fisher had noted, the amenities in the area. When we took a look at the site, we looked at what was in the area as far as parks, what's available for residents to use. We also take a look at what are we adding to the site? So not just open space for active or passive recreation on-site, but it's also the amenity spaces that are adding inside the building. In older developments, you typically didn't have the amenity spaces that are being put in the new buildings. So the combination of the internal and the external, although not qualified as landscaped open space, it forms part of the amenity area that's available to the residents. So I think from my perspective, when we looked at the numbers, yes, we're seeking a reduction, but the reduction was based on the fact that we're also adding indoor space in conjunction with the outdoor space and that would be available to all of the residents to use.
I'm not supposed to give opinions, so I won't, but thank you.
Counselor Freeman?
I have two, several questions actually. So my questions are in alignment with the urban design guidelines of the city. So I'm just scanning your urban design brief, which is brief. And I'm struggling with how this design, as you presented it, meets with some of the pieces. So a streetscape as a pedestrian-friendly feature in space. And in the site plan, I'm, I, I, all aspects actually of the urban design brief just don't seem to align with our guidelines. And so I need help at some point, whether it's a revised urban design brief, whether it's a revised urban design. I'm not sure what needs to happen, but the aspects that I need more information on because they don't appear to align for me is the streetscape as pedestrian-friendly, the human scale of that front podium and the relationship between the podium and the sidewalk and then the neighboring houses. The compatibility of the development. So the guideline objection is that, objective is that the sites and buildings enhance the quality of surrounding neighborhood character. And so I'm trying to understand even amongst your design choices in terms of your facade choices, all of those elements, your articulation, how that, that is complementing the surrounding areas. Safety and security, it appears to me because of how much of the site that you've consumed, I'm trying to understand the, how you have eyes on the space and the whole SEPDED principles associated with that. The balconies seem set back and I'm trying to understand how people can actively surveillance the spaces. I saw where you identified in your justification report the transit-oriented design. I can see where you're headed with that. With regard to the building design, it asks in the design guidelines that it be well-proportioned and articulated facades that enhance the neighborhood character and context. And so again, I'm trying to see what aspects of the articulation actually align with enhancing that piece. The landscape design, although I can see the amenity spaces that you're building into the building, I'm, I, I'm not sure whether it's in here, but I haven't had time to download all the reports. I'm doing this kind of quickly. But the, the relationship between those landscaped amenity spaces that you're using to supplement your landscaping criteria, how that can be viewed by the neighborhood more broadly as greening the area. So I guess I'm trying to get a sense of that. What I didn't see in here either was view shed images, so the view shed from the neighboring properties, like literally what it looks like to be in the house. Like I know you identified that there's like 30 meters or 35 meters or something for a buffer, but I'm trying to still get a sense of what does that look like and how does the urban design of the building enhance those sightlines? So I'm trying to get a sense of that. And it's mainly, my questions really deal with the fact that this is an infill development and you're not surrounded by other similar-sized buildings. When, when a building of this ilk is constructed, say, in a part of King Street where it's a step down from a 25-story to a 12, to a 6, to a 4, I can visualize how that urban design relates to those, that other massing. But in this particular case, in some, in some respect, it feels like this is a tall building, even though it may not meet the criteria of the tall building within the urban design guideline, but because of the way it's functioning with the surrounding buildings and that it's a standalone of this height and magnitude, I feel like that the urban design has to reflect that and that uniqueness. And so I guess that's what I'm really hoping that you can help me to better understand. And, and then on the site plan, in terms of the site circulation, with regard to pedestrian circulation, it seems very well-orientated to the automobile circulation, but I don't see the pedestrian circulation quite as well. So that you have the sidewalk up front, you have this trail, it looks like that's the trail that the city asked for along the one side. And then, and then it's, it feels like it's primarily automobile-centric. So if you can just help me through those pieces, I think that would be helpful. And so I think those are the pieces that I'm trying to better understand and I'm hopeful that that might outline whether or not the, the massing that you're asking for is really the right scale for the context, because that's, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Through you Chair Whaley, there is a lot of questions there and a lot of comments. What I can do, I guess I'll just speak to the first one that's very easy to answer, I think, is the pedestrian access. So looking at the plan on the screen right now, and if you can see my arrow, there is the pedestrian walkway that comes through the site at this location, goes underneath the building and takes you directly to the back building. So we do have the pedestrian access to the new building at the front, but there also is a direct pedestrian connection to the, the existing building through the site. So we're trying to work with that and accommodate pedestrian movement. There was a focus on our part not to try and leave the existing building out where it was hidden behind the building, didn't have pedestrian access to the road and things like that. So that's why the design is functioning or drawn in this way. With regard to all of the other comments that you've said, view shed images and things like that, I think that's stuff that we can come back with and work with staff on to try and answer those questions for sure.
Sorry Scott, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, that's fine. It's just, yeah, there's a lot of questions here and I think they're good questions. There are things that we can work with, with staff to answer. I'm sure they're taking notes. I've taken notes and I'd be happy to come back and try and answer those questions for you in more detail.
So I think you outlined a great example with regard to the pedestrian movement and you'll see how that front facade, because it's just a straight wall, like it doesn't really enhance, in my mind's eye, like the urban design on that front doesn't really enhance the pedestrian realm along the street because of just how stark it is. And so for me, when I read the urban design guidelines and that reference to front articulation, I'm expecting to see something super dynamic there, especially given that the original OP was for mixed use where you would have an activated front space and it just doesn't feel activated there. And then when you pointed to the corridor between the two buildings, and this is a great illustration that you have there, from the back, you can see that the SEPDED principles, you've got some very, some corridors that just don't have great sightlines in terms of safety and security and because the podiums are so close together. And, and so that's, those are just the pieces that, that jump out at me with regard to urban design and the site design. And so I'm hopeful that you can go back and reconsider that and, and, and look at the design in some regard.
Through you Chair Whaley. Like I said, I'll take these information or these questions away and I'll come back with a, work with staff to come up with a more detailed response.
Counselor Maven has some questions.
Thank you Chair Whaley and through you to delegation. The 18 percent that was talked about before on the, it's nice how the conceptual designs have green space all over the place.
Yes.
It's, it's, so it's easy to get disoriented. But on the site plan, I can't see where 20 percent of the site plan is landscape area.
Through you Chair Whaley. And again, if you can follow my arrow, so the landscaped open space would be the area along the frontage, this area between the parking and the street, the buffer areas around the parking and this large open area along the tributary of Clare Creek at the back of the property as well. So landscaped open space is basically all of that developed area or that open space area around the site.
Okay, and you're confident that adds up to 18 percent? You've done the math, so I assume that's correct. May I move on to a couple of other topics? Can I go to your slide eight please? This one is interesting because I think it reinforces a lot of the existing and past practices that the city's had to make sure that there is enough community space and green space available. But it seems that you, on this particular diagram, it seems that, that this application seems to be using space that was provided by other developers, other developments, for the benefit of this one. I don't know if that's fair or not. That's a question, yeah?
Through you Chair Whaley. It's, that's an interesting question. It's, I, I, the creation of public parks and open spaces is meant for the use of all residents of the city of Waterloo, I believe. So whether they're created by the city or created by other developers, once they're public space, they're accessible to the residents of our project as well as the residents of anyone living in the area. So yes, our residents do have the ability to use that public space and the three parks that were noted on my earlier slide. And we are trying to create amenity space within the exist, or the new building to compensate and benefit that as well. So there are opportunities for both passive and active amenities on the site itself or in proximity to the site.
Okay, and if I may, and I've got a number of questions Scott, so you have to be patient with me. Is there a parkland dedication as part of this application? Does it apply at all? I guess I'm asking that more of staff than anything else.
Through you Chair Whaley. That is something that we'll have to take a look at and see if past developments have contributed to any parkland dedications.
Okay. But the green space, if I may, the green space that's shown on slide eight and right in front of us, most of those came from parkland dedications of previous developments or GRCA lands. Okay. The trees on the 3D, with the 3D picture is actually, is quite, kind of interesting to see that and what have you. But the trees on the side, it looks like no trees are cut down as part of this project. If I go along the walkway, like the mirror, that's one of the walkways that I, I'm trying to use.
Through you Chair Whaley. A tree management plan will be done as part of the project. I can't speak to you today to tell you whether every tree on the site will be saved or removed. As per my practice or experience with the city of Waterloo, site planning staff would work to ensure that as many trees as possible would be saved on the site. That's a given. We know that, our development team knows that. So yes, the rendering may illustrate trees that are either existing or new trees or a combination of both. But yes, the trees along the walkway may be disturbed partway through construction and new trees may have to be planted, just as with any other development.
Okay, thank you. On the shade study, and to be honest, I never got to read that part of it. I've read most of your application including the traffic study. But at the shade study, when the original building was put in place, it's got an east-west orientation and it's in the back part of the lot. It doesn't seem to be, it seems to be way ahead of its time before shade studies were commonplace. It seems to be something that, you know, whatever was thought was put in there was, was a good idea. And when I look at this building, the shade study, I don't know if you want to comment on it or not, but it seems like it blocks off the sunset to the people on the east side of the building and it blocks off the sunrise to the, to the people on the west side. Is that a fair summary?
As I wasn't the author of the shade study or the creator, I'll hand it out to the architect for just a second.
Okay, thank you.
Glenn Reinders from Reinders Reader Limited. So when we basically did the shade study, the sun is coming up in this area here so that, one of the things that we talked about with the local residents is maintaining the sun in the morning in this area which they have in this location here. And then the sun is moving around towards the back. So we are getting the morning sun directly in towards this space here. What's around on the side right now is going to lose part in the afternoon, but we're looking at connecting the building through that portion anyways.
Wouldn't that mean then that people on the other side, on the west side of the...
On the backside, they're, they're in shade for the same part of, of the portion of the day from where the sun moves around.
But with that building there, the shade is going to be pretty extensive for the people on the other side.
You can look at the shadow study, that'll probably show you the best with the increments of how it moves around and that gives a better indication of it with the grades.
And I should do that?
We don't have it here in order to actually show you those processes, so.
Okay. Thank you. Traffic study. There's an assumption in the traffic study that the speed of the cars coming down Beechwood will be 50 kilometers, maybe adding 10, make it 60 kilometers per hour. And that's, I think, pretty good on a flat street, but that's a hill going down. And I don't think that is what happens. I know when I go down that hill, it's, I put my brakes on just to bring it down. I would say I'm not a speedy, speeding driver. That's my story. But when it, so the assumptions there are that the speed limits are, actually, as I read the traffic study, it even backs off and says, you know, we're going to assume it's 50 and we're going to let it go at that. I don't think that's the case. I think it needs to be looked at and I think it has to be more realistic. When people are coming around that corner, they're going, heading towards Herb Street, they're usually picking up speed, not, not reducing speed. The other thing too is the alignment of the, of the driveway is being changed. It's moved from the west side of the property to the east side of the property. And bear with me on this one, but the Beechwood Commons area is zoned MR12 as well. So at some point in time, and I don't know when, from a planning perspective, when you start taking these things into consideration, but if you're going to have traffic coming out of the, this project, traffic coming out of, say, an MR12 in the Beechwood Commons area, there's got to be some sort of... there's got to be some sort of bottleneck someplace if the volumes are about the same. I just see that as an issue. Is that something we should be concerned about?
Through you Chair Whaley, duly noted. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I will take these comments back to the traffic engineer and have them take a look at it.
Okay. The other thing too on the traffic study, I noticed it talked about the safety perspective from the property residents, but the adjacent properties, the safety aspects aren't the same. It's, it's just not in the traffic study that I could see. Maybe I missed it. And thanks, thank you very much.
Mayor Jaworski.
Thank you through the chair. I think I'd like to focus on the context, which Counsel Freeman has mentioned earlier and Counsel Maven has mentioned earlier. But the slide on context really didn't resonate with me. I think you mentioned the zero, you know, issues that you're used to dealing with, like zero lot line setbacks and not adjacent trails. And those are really highly urbanized issues of intensification. Yet out here, we're definitely in a, the suburban environment of Waterloo. And if you look at the context on the lot, this slide, it shows a two-dimensional viewpoint. And I think what's really missing here is the three-dimensional viewpoint of the neighborhood, the context of the setbacks of the existing homes and the concept of green space and open space. Like when you walk by that building today, you know, you notice it, but you don't really notice it because it's set back so far. When you walk down Beechwood Drive, you see the homes there, the townhomes, and even some of the complexes are really set back, like their own environment, having their own roadways and that. And this one just seems, you can barely, you can only kind of imagine it here because it's two-dimensional, but really upfront and missing the green space and things like that. So I'm just wondering, how, how are you going to address the, the three-dimensional context of how this fits on the property and in the neighborhood, which I don't think has been addressed here today?
Through you Chair Whaley. Again, the context of bringing the building closer to the street along Beechwood Drive with the one-story podium was meant to provide that street, that street edge, that presence of the street that we're typically encouraged to provide by planning staff. Then the building is set back from that. Again, down the side of the walkway, it was the same context. The, the levels that face the walkway are actually the parking structure. And the residential component is set back again from that on top with the darker blue on the sketch before you. So from the context of, I think where you're going with this is, this is a more rural, not rural, but a more situation where a higher building or a taller building will seem somewhat out of place and I appreciate that, I do. The thing is that the official plan designation is on the property today allowing for it. And that the zoning that's being contemplated for this land, for this entire stretch, going out this way allows for this as well or will allow for this. The lands are also designated as a minor corridor. So while there's some hesitation that this development may be at the outer limits of where this type of development should occur, the documents in place and the documents that are forthcoming all suggest that this is where this development should happen. So that's why the basis for where, where we're coming from and why the application is before the city today. We see this as the direction that the city was taking with these lands and the lands to the east. So that's why the application is here today.
One might suggest the city might have a keener eye on the setbacks due to the context though. Just on the light blue space compared to the, the tower itself, is that above grade, the podium? That's above grade, correct?
That's correct.
So when I look at, maybe it's an optical illusion, but when I look at the podium in the diagram supplied, the podium seems much closer to the road than even the garage doors of the neighboring townhomes and that.
So you, through you Chair Whaley, yes, in context, this is the portion of the building that would be budding Beechwood Drive and currently proposed a 3.5 meter setback. The new zoning bylaw would require the five meter setback in that area. So yes, you're correct, it is closer.
Closer than the existing townhouse, houses, garage, this type of thing.
Correct, yes.
Something to think about.
Any other questions from council? Yeah, we have a few. Counselor Henry?
Thank you Chair Whaley and thank you Scott for taking notes and you'll have more to take, I'm sure, throughout the evening and we'll see who can. Can you, you mentioned that you had a May 30th meeting with the tenants in the existing building and they shared some, some feedback. I'm not sure we know what that feedback is. I'm looking to staff. Can you, can you share what you heard from, from tenants in the existing building?
Through you Chair Whaley, and the residents, some of the residents are here. I see some faces that I saw at that meeting. They may or may not speak tonight. The questions were about the new building, shadowing, the use of the amenity space, would the amenity space be available to the existing tenants or not? Length of construction, like duration, how would the tenants be notified of construction, what would be available to them? It was noted that there would be a website set up and that different stages of construction would be notified through the website. There'd be contact information and things like that. So it was a give and take of questions about how this project could unfold, the duration of timing, what would happen to the existing building, what would happen to their existing balconies. There was discussion about loss of visibility, loss of existing trees. Some of the, I'm sure you're going to hear these comments tonight. It's the standard comments we hear and I'm sure council hears as well. It was a good conversation. I appreciated the residents that came out and gave us that feedback. Some of them asked about the availability of moving into the new building. There was discussions about rental rates. There was a healthy discussion. It went on for an hour, hour and a half and it was a good discussion, yes.
That last point raises something we haven't talked about yet. What's the, can you talk about the market target for the, for the building and where your, your price point is likely situated relative to market?
Through you Chair Whaley. To be honest, I haven't looked at the rental rate that the landowners proposing for this lot. That hasn't come into consideration for my planning review, my planning opinion about the development. But there was discussion about the existing tenants being able to move into that building. I know there's a thought, you've heard speakers here before tonight about an aging society, about quality development. Our client, my proponent, is hoping to build a quality project on here, a rental project. And it would be hoped that some of the existing tenants in the existing building may transfer over into the new building. It's hoped that if there's residents in the area who want to downsize and get out of their existing homes, that they may look at this as an option. I honestly don't know the rental rates. It wasn't part of my considerations for this project.
It's often something that comes up when, when people are before us, so I thought I'd ask since we don't see as many rental projects and I do find that interesting. Can you walk me through the changes in, in the amenity space? I did notice from the slides that Wendy provided a substantial, you know, decrease in, in level from, you know, what's required now to what's, and you've got different, can you walk me through the changes in, in amenity area in terms of, you know, overall size per resident and those, those aspects? It did seem substantial on the variance that we first saw.
Yes, through you Chair Whaley. The existing zoning has a very high amenity space requirement per bedroom, per unit. So there, and again, those regulations are somewhat distant from current planning direction, current official plan policy, current provincial direction and what we can actually provide on site. So there is a reduction in the landscaped open space, which we've talked about. And there is a reduction in the calculation for amenity space per unit or per bedroom. So what exists on site today is the tennis courts and the open space that's on site. What we're proposing would be, again, some open space on site and then the amenity space within the new building. And that's detailed on the site plan in that area in green. So that would effectively be the amenity space that would be constructed in support of the new project.
I just wanted, you know, confirm the long-term intent of those amenity spaces as to remain amenity spaces. We've seen projects that have come forward and shown some of those and then taken advantage of mixed use provisions later and tried to convert them and we're trying to close that one down. But I just wanted to confirm that the intention is that these would remain amenity spaces.
Through you Chair Whaley, the intent is that the zoning bylaw amendment that we were seeking would seek to allow for some of the additional permitted uses that are allowed on the site today are recognized in the existing zoning. We'd like to carry those forward and allow for those to continue, just in the zoning. There's no intent to actually include those on the site as part of the development today. And we don't have parking to support any commercial development on the site today. So we're limited in that. I would suggest that the amount of amenity space, if this goes forward, could be detailed in the zoning. The amount of amenity area could be detailed, could be put in as an actual figure, an area. And even though the zoning potentially could permit those additional ancillary uses, that the zoning may not actually allow them to occur on site unless additional parking could be provided somehow or that that amenity space was recreated somewhere else on site, which based on my review would be very difficult to do.
It would appear to be. I, one last comment, just to add on to what you'll bring back arising from Counselor Freeman's list of urban design reviews. I'd say under the more specific guideline sections on tall buildings, I found the paragraph that you had, it could use more. Certainly there are a long list of tall building guidelines and I think many of the points of feedback we'll hear today from the public and we're already listed do overlap, I think, with many of the directions that the city provides in those guidelines. And I think a way to sort of suss out what's appropriate and not is going to fall in, in some of that space. So I think some more work there. I'd love to see it.
Counselor Freeman?
Sorry, I was just taking a look at the shadow study and I just wondered, in the future, can you identify the current shadows cast by the existing site plan and then the future shadows cast so that we understand the cumulative changes? Because it's just kind of blurry right now.
Through you Chair Whaley, I'm seeing a nod from the person behind me, so yes, we can.
And then with regard to the whole notion of this being a corridor, a minor, was it a minor node, a minor corridor?
Minor corridor.
Minor corridor. When, when there's not an intention to enact the, the, the commercial uses on the ground floor, so activate that ground floor vis a vis commercial uses, does that designation still come to play in terms of analyzing this report from a planning justification perspective? So that's, that's my question. It just feels like from an urban design perspective, we allow some, some stronger massing to happen when we're expecting those commercial uses on the ground floor, but that's not happening here. And so I'm trying to get an understanding of, of, of the relationship of development of this ilk making reference to that aspect of the plan. Does that make sense?
Through you Chair Whaley, just double checking my notes, yes, the minor corridors are intended to recognize major streets or transit routes that link nodes and provide opportunities for intensification and are intended to develop primarily for medium-to-medium-high-density residential. So that's for a minor corridor, which this site is.
Any other questions from council for the delegation? Seeing none, thank you Mr. Patterson. Our next delegation is Jerry Huskamp, President of the Board of Directors of the Village on Beechwood West condo.
Hi there. I'm sorry to interrupt. There's a change to the order of the agenda.
Jennifer Lieberman.
Yes.
There you go.
That's me, thank you. So good evening Mayor Jaworski and council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Jennifer Lieberman and I represent approximately 200 homes or about 500 residents at the addresses that are noted on this slide. I'm here to present a number of objections to the zoning bylaw amendments proposed by Lebrash, Patterson and Associates Incorporated for the new building development at 508 Beechwood Drive. To summarize our objections, the bylaw, just hit page down. The bylaw known as Residential Mixed Use 40 or RMU 40 that would enable the amendments to the current bylaw has no legal status currently. Further, the proposed amendments will have long-term detrimental effects on the quality of life of the surrounding residents. Based on these issues, the application should be rejected. And now for some further detail. Our first point is with regard to the proposed new RMU 40 bylaw, which would allow the developers amendments to the current zoning. The bylaw is only in draft form at this time and has no legal status. Council has not voted on it and public input is still being sought. The applicants even acknowledge this in their own documentation and want approval to build prior to the new bylaw being passed. It's possible that citizens may raise enough valid concerns that the draft bylaw is withdrawn or changed by the city. Our second point relates to the detrimental effects on the quality of life of current residents. Point A in this regard deals with an increase in congestion and noise. Amendment eight seeks almost a four-fold increase in the number of allowable units on the property plus retail space. Today, the property consists of 41 units within a mid-rise seven-story apartment building. It has no rear-facing balconies. It sits below street level and is fronted by a berm and mature trees, which all reduce the obtrusiveness of the current building. The developer wants to keep the existing building and erect a new 140-unit building with retail space over top of the current tennis court and small green space. There will be balconies on all sides of the building and they will probably need to remove approximately 35 mature trees and the berm. The developer's amendment eight proposes 243 parking spaces for 237 bedrooms, residential visitors and retail patrons. This is not enough parking. We can expect spillover onto Beechwood Drive where overnight parking is not permitted and potentially into the visitor parking areas of neighboring condos. Further, the proposed development is at least a five-minute walk on a good day to only two GRT transit stops and there are no plans to offer LRT stops in the vicinity. All of this means increased car traffic on Beechwood Drive and Herb Street. Regarding foot traffic, there's a very narrow pedestrian right-of-way behind Beechwood Commons condo complex and an open walking trail with no fencing behind the Village of Beechwood West. There will be increased foot traffic in these areas, which will negatively affect the privacy and the security of these residents. With the proposal including retail space, residents have concerns about the possible installation of a variety store with late-night hours. This would subject residents to headlight glare through their windows at night. Point B concerns the negative effect on community aesthetics and amenities. Amendments one, two, and three deal with the reduction of front, side, and rear setbacks surrounding the new building. Today, the current mid-level apartment building is set back 60 meters from the street. Collectively, for all three setbacks, the developer is asking for what amounts to a 60% reduction over the setbacks called for in current zoning. As an example, if approved, the front of the new building would be only 3.5 meters from the sidewalk. We have an example of how this would look. This is a photo of a 12 to 13-story building on the corner of Herb and Westmount. The red circle highlights that there is virtually no green space on this side of the building. This is what we don't want to see in our neighborhood. Amendment four seeks to allow for the height of the new building to be 39.8 meters, which is above the current maximum allowance of 36 meters. The proposal tries to justify the new build as, quote, "being of a size, density, building design, and nature that is complementary to the surrounding existing residential neighborhood," end quote. Neither the height of the new build nor RMU 40 align with the appearance of the existing two-story residences nearby. two-story residences nearby. A 12- to 13-story apartment building with a main-floor retail space is not compatible with one- and two-story dwellings. Perhaps as a precedent, in the early 1990s, a similar proposal was made to build a high-rise apartment building at Liberty Gate, which is just around the corner from the site in question. The application was rejected, and instead, low-rise condominiums were erected, similar in nature to the surrounding condos that are there. Please note the following examples of the style of the buildings in the neighborhood today. This is one of the condos within Beechwood Commons, a group of Cape Cod-style residences that are two stories. Beechwood Commons is next to the proposed building site. This is a condo in Beechwood Classics, also next to the proposed building site. These residences are two stories. And lastly, this is a condo in the Village of Beechwood West, behind the proposed building. These residences are also two stories. The current mid-rise building on the property has many antennae and communication structures on its roof, which are an eyesore. Neighbors are concerned about the additional height and unsightliness if more antennae are installed on the roof of the new building. Please note that the artist's rendering in the neighborhood's, in the developer's plans does not currently show this equipment. The new building will also affect all of the surrounding properties' access to sunlight. For example, the Village in Beechwood West will have, and this is actually a typo on the slide, I apologize, the 16 should read 29. So the Village in Beechwood West will have 29 of 55 units affected by additional shade. Privacy is also a concern, as new residents on the top floors will be able to look down into the surrounding swimming pools and deck spaces. Amendment 5 seeks to reduce the current requirement of 50 square meters of amenity space per unit to 2.5 square meters per bedroom. This means a reduction in amenity space from approximately 97,000 to 8,300 square feet. This is a decrease of 92%. This amendment also has the presumptuous expectation that residents of 508 Beechwood Drive could use the privately-held Beechwood West tennis courts and swimming pool. We've confirmed with the Beechwood West Association Board that this will not be permitted. Amendment 6 seeks a landscaped open space regulation of 18%, and I know we've talked about this a little bit already, of the lot area, the current requirement is 30%. The rationale the developer uses for this almost 50% reduction is that there's surrounding green space in existence already, including the Clare Creek Tributary and nearby McCray Park. An existing pathway, tributary, nearby park, green space, or neighboring yard should not be used to change property zoning requirements, or create the impression of a bylaw-compliant landscaped space for a new build. Note that the Clare Creek Tributary is not actually a walkable area, rather, it's a narrow swamp, and would not be an adequate noise or visual buffer between the demolition, construction, or the new building and the abutting properties. And some additional concerns. Waterloo's current bylaw mandates that proposed new building structures of a certain height require written notice to surrounding properties within 120 meters. Notice was only just received last week by residents that fall within this distance. This is well after the city's yellow sign was posted on the boulevard in front of the property for the general public. Given the close proximity of the construction to surrounding residences, we are very concerned about the amount of noise and airborne demolition and construction dust for an extended period of time that could pose serious health concerns. In closing, based on the objections to the amendments presented here, the application in question should be rejected. The RMU 40 bylaw that would enable the amendments to the current bylaw currently has no legal status. The proposed amendments will have long-term detrimental effects on the quality of life of surrounding residents. We understand the city's plan for densification, but this should happen where it makes sense, not in an area completely incompatible with the proposed development. Thank you for your time.
Ladies and gentlemen, you know, in Waterloo council chambers, we have people who come to the microphone with different opinions than yours, and you'll have different opinions than others. So it's our tradition here that we quietly respect hearing everyone's opinion, so you should really refrain from clapping. Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Lieberman. Is there any questions from council to the delegations? Councilor Maven.
Through you, Chair Whaley. First of all, thank you very much for consolidating all those groups. Given the emails and phone calls I got, and I had a very lengthy conversation with one of your neighbors, actually, she's on the East Coast while she was talking to me, but I understood what you did, and putting it all together in a very short timeframe, and I much appreciate it, and I'm sure all of rest of council appreciates this as well. The, one of the things that Councilor Durrell had talked to me about in a previous application in an informal meeting, was trying to get a meeting between the developer, staff, and the neighborhood, in order to dig into the issue a little more, and understand where each party is coming from. And I'm hoping that this group, probably through yourself, or whoever you would designate, would be willing to participate in that.
I'd be happy to help facilitate.
Great, okay, thank you very much, we have your name.
Mayor Jaworski.
Thank you, through the chair. I wonder if you could go back to Slide 11, please, that was the one that shows the townhouse complex just to the west of the current property?
This one?
That's the one.
Okay.
I think, maybe you can describe it, since you're the delegate, and I have, can't express an opinion at this point tonight, but if you take a look there, you see the setback distance between the complex there, the house there, and to the right of the screen, the fence, which is the trailway there. And I think it would be helpful if you gave context of what the environment's like there for all of council who don't walk by there as often as Bob as I, because I think really that drives it home for me, is the real setback that we see there that I probably can't estimate.
Yes, it is farther away from the street than what the proposed building site would be. And what always strikes me when I put this presentation together, and looking at these pictures, and my husband took a number of these pictures, are the trees. How many years does it take for trees to get to be this size? And I know Mr. Patterson had said that there's, they would be looking at some sort of tree study or whatever, so that, you know, with the new build, there would be new trees put in, but we know that those would remain small trees for a really long period of time. So there's a lot of beautiful trees in the area, and they line that whole crosswalk all the way through to McCray Park.
And that's on the side yard setback there?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilor Freeman.
Through you, Chair Whaley. Actually, my questions are for staff, so I don't need to...
Any other questions for the delegation? Thank you, Ms. Lieberman.
Thank you very much.
And now your question to staff, Councilor.
Thank you. So, a couple of the questions that came up in listening to this delegation, that I'm hoping I can get answers to, is whether or not it's common to use off-property buffers to support increased height and density.
Through you, Chair Whaley. No, it's not common to use it.
So, I guess in your planning justification report, if you can set your mind to that, I'd appreciate it. The other question that I had was, what the building massing would be if it actually conformed to the required setbacks, and/or if the variances that were requested were, I guess, more in keeping with the variances that we've seen historically around this table, and maybe in keeping with the buffers that exist around the other properties. The tree management study, I'd like more information on that, because it does appear as though all the trees will have to be removed as a part of this, and I'm not sure how that's really managed. And then, I guess the other question I had was whether or not it's common to use a GRCA required piece of land to meet the requirements of the buffered setback, and to meet the requirements of a landscaped amenity. I can understand it being used as part of the landscape calculation, but is it actually really an amenity if you can't access it? So I guess, if I could just get some more information on that, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Other questions for staff, before we move on to the next delegation? Seeing none, now we'll hear from Jerry Huskamp.
Good evening, Chair Whaley, Mayor Jaworski, and councilors. My name is Jerry Huskamp, and I represent the 55 residences of the Village of Beechwood West, 435 Winchester. We have approximately 110 homeowners at this residence. I'm here to present a number of issues to the new building development at 508 Beechwood Drive, proposed by La Bresch, Patterson, and Associates Incorporated. The proposal would allow a new 12-13-story building, creating long-term negative impacts to the quality of the life of our residents by casting additional shade throughout the year that does not exist at the present time. There will an increase of impermeable surfaces and a decrease in permeable surfaces, causing potentially more stormwater to run into the existing stormwater management creek that runs just to the south of our units. There will be increased pressure on schools as a result of increased housing. Finally, densification of the populace in the area will result in more general impact to the Village in Beechwood West property. Based on these issues, the application should be modified. And now for further details. Shade. The distance of our development from the proposed building will be between 34 meters and 250 meters, depending on the unit. Using the developer's shade study, I have attached to my submission a spreadsheet with the analysis of the four measured days, the two solstices, June 21st and December 21st, and the two equinoxes, March 21st and September 21st. The results reflect the additional shade caused by the 12- or 13-story building. I factored out the shade from the existing seven-story building. And I believe Councilor Friedman was asking about detailed analysis, and as being north of the proposed development, we are impacted throughout the whole day. To summarize, in total, 29 or 53% of the 55 units will be subjected to more shade throughout the year in varying amounts where there hasn't been any before. 16 or 44% of the 36 hours modeled on the four measured days would contain shade where there wasn't any before. During the spring, the hours of 2:30 to 6:30 p.m. would receive the additional shade. During the summer, no hours would receive additional shade. Fall time, the hours of 1:30 to 6:30 p.m. would receive additional shade, and during the winter, the hours of 11:30 to 6:30 p.m. would also receive additional shade. On those four days, the unit with the most impact will have a total of eight additional hours of shade due to the proposed building. On those four days, there would be 77 total unit hours, so sum up all the hours by unit, you will have 77 total unit hours of additional shade. It is impossible to extrapolate beyond the four measured days, given the supplied shade study data. However, we can clearly say that the Village in Beechwood West, and also the developments to the east and west, will be negatively impacted. Stormwater management. The proposed development will result in a 22% reduction of permeable surface, while simultaneously incurring a 14% increase in impermeable surface. Therefore, there will be more impermeable surface than the pre-development, and therefore more runoff during the storms, that currently would be the situation for the existing land. The objections of the neighboring homeowners correctly identified an issue with the number of parking spaces. As well, since there's a prohibition on overnight parking in Waterloo, street parking will not be feasible for overnight parking to handle the overflow at 508 Beechwood. If this translates to more onsite parking, more runoff will be created. A tributary to Clare Creek functions as a stormwater management system. It separates the Village in Beechwood West to the north from the proposed development to the south. Historical flows since 2015 in this creek have been evident, encroaching closer to Village and Beechwood West units. We don't want any more water coming down that creek beside our development, as we have observed a recent storm, which was not a big storm, which was not far off from the total carrying capacity of the creek. This is that particular storm. During that event, the creek flows reached within 15 horizontal feet and approximately 0.5 vertical feet from some of the Village and Beechwood West units. A little more water, and we would have had flooding. And again, this was not necessarily a big storm. Changing the permeable surfaces in 508 Beechwood from the current green space to concrete, pavement, and more surface will exacerbate the flows in this creek during flooding events, unless mitigated. We've talked about McCray Park. As an aside, abutting the property to the west is a public walkway providing access to McCray Park located northeast of the subject property. This green space, which contains a basketball court, functions as a stormwater management dry pond. It's subject to substantial temporary water storage during high rainfall events. The remaining green space park is needed to handle stormwater runoff volumes from residential development to the west. As a consequence of this, in our opinion, there isn't any additional recreational development potential on this stormwater pond. Increased pressure on schools. There will be increased pressure on schools as a result of more housing. Given that, a number of years ago, the city decided to release the lands designated for future school use, upon which our Village in Beechwood West now exists. Clearly, there wasn't a large need identified at that time. Now, will this make a difference? Public elementary school students would likely go to either Edner Stabler or Mary Johnson Public School. Projections for the 2015-16 school year show that both schools were at capacity, including their temporary capabilities. Catholic elementary school students would likely go to Holy Rosary, which in 2016 had a 67% utilization. The Catholic Board had 2015 ministry funding approval to demolish seven classrooms to reduce capacity. It is not clear if that funding was used. Lastly, general impacts to the Village in Beechwood West property. The noise generated by residents post-construction from such a substantial development will be evident. Much of the noise generated during occupancy will be far above the tree line. Noise generated above the tree line is much more pervasive than street-level noise in terms of impact. And I would like to show you some context that was earlier alluded to. This is the back of our development. These are our one- and two-story condominium townhomes. This yellow building in the back is the existing seven-story building. We've tried to represent before and after views, pre-development on the left and post-development on the right. We used a conservatively small representation of the new building, but tried to visualize that flyover that we had seen earlier this evening. As well, the vertical characterization is twice the height of the existing building. The visualization is amateurish, I agree, and lacks perspective, but we hope that you agree that the impact of the 12- or 13-stories will be dramatic. agree that the impact of the twelve- or thirteen-stories will be dramatic. In closing, though it may appear we are presenting a nimby, not in my backyard, argument, the Village in Beechwood West supports densification. This is the right thing to do. It's the form of the intensification of the development we are opposed to. The issue, we believe, is a tension between mixed-use, medium-high-density residential zones existing adjacent to low-density, one-to-two-story residential zones. The introduction of Beechwood Commons, Beechwood Classics, Maple Forest Place, Maple Forest Lane, and the Village in Beechwood West were tastefully done. They were individually blended into the character of our neighborhood. Developers respected those who were there before. Please, in turn, then, require the builder to be respectful of the existing residents, the character and value of the neighborhood, integrating their ideas in a compatible way. Allowing a new twelve- or thirteen-story building to come into existence within thirty-four meters of existing two-story condo townhomes, in our view, is neither respectful nor compatible. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for your presentation, Jerry. Do we have any questions for the delegation? Seeing none, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in, here in the room who wants to have five minutes to speak on Seeing none. This, gotta go to my notes here. If there are no more delegations, this formal, informal public meeting is now concluded, and staff will review the issues and provide further reporting to council at a later date. Just a couple of more minutes for us, council. There's no consideration of notice of motion, nor notice of motion, nor communications, nor correspondence, nor regional information and correspondence. Is there any unfinished business? Seeing none. Is there any new business? Councilor Vee.
It's not really new business. I just wanted to mention that this Saturday, the KW Symphony Volunteer Committee is hosting the House and Garden Tour of Note. Thirty dollars a ticket, and there's six beautiful homes on the tour, and yeah, check out the Symphony website and buy some tickets for your, you know, mother-in-law or somebody like that. Anyway, thank you.
Councilor Durrell.
The Summer Solstice in Uptown is this weekend, so buy your tickets, they're going
Councilor Freeman.
I just wanted to say thanks to staff for all their hard work for the Service Center Open House. It was amazing. I look forward to seeing the statistics on how many people went by. Somehow or another, I think we need a sign that says, "There might still be parking in the parking lot. Go check first before you park on Lexington Road." But, but yeah, it was a great day. I don't know how much money we raised for Grand River Hospital, but eighteen ninety-eight, that's fantastic. So thanks again to staff, and I'm gonna also send a kudos the communications way, because communications worked hard to try to get the message out through our various social media accounts, and they were definitely received, so thank you.
Any, any other questions of staff? Henry and Durrell, over to coun, over to Mayor Jaworski. Yeah, we've, we've, we have adjourned. Henry and Durrell adjourned. Okay. Henry and Durrell. Okay, now can we adjourn? Unanimous and adjourned. Would anybody like to adjourn the meeting? Councilor Vee, Councilor Maven? This meeting is adjourned. Over to you, Mayor Jaworski.
Good evening and welcome to the City Waterloo Special Council Meeting of Monday, June eleventh, twenty eighteen. I have disclosure of cunary interests of general nature thereof. Seeing none, somebody want to enact some bylaws? Counselor Freeman, Counselor Burke, do all those in favor? Motion to adjourn, Counselor Maven and Counselor Vee, all those in favor? It's all us. Thank you, goodbye.